Before we all freeze to death. All right, we're on the record. I don't know if you can hear me, but I'm gonna go ahead and start. Good morning, everyone. It's Tuesday, June 9th, and the time is 9:00 a.m. The Board of Ada County Commissioners is in session for our open business meeting. We have all three commissioners with us today, and we have quite a few people in the room today, probably a few online as well. Too many to go around, I think, with our masks on. Can't even hear in the back. So we'll just make sure that we have either a sign-in sheet. We do in the back, so make sure that you sign in as you leave if you haven't done so already. Make sure your phones are silenced or turned off at this point. And any changes to the agenda, Madam Chair? All right, we're gonna go ahead then, and we will start with my agenda to go. Unfinished business, I'm gonna need a motion to remove the unfinished business from the table.
Madam Chair, I move to remove the unfinished business from the table for consideration.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, guys have it, motion carries. Hello. Is that procurement?
Yes.
Good morning, Bob, how are you?
I'm well, Madam Chair.
Good, you got your go Bronco mask on.
I do, I'm representing Boise State this morning.
You got a new recruit, an exciting new football recruit.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's good.
Hopefully we'll have a season this year.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, yeah. I would say his name, but I don't think I could pronounce it. From Nigeria, it's really complicated but cool name, yeah. Okay, let's go ahead then, and it looks like we have a final ranking and award recommendation. Is that right?
Yes, Madam Chair, Commissioners, we do have a, on your agenda this morning is a award recommendation for RFP 20049, and this is the Consultant for Development Impact Fees Study and Capital Improvement Plan Development. And the evaluation team has completed the initial evaluation, but would like additional time for continued due diligence, and would like to retable the final rankings and award recommendation to the June 16th, 2020 Open Business Meeting.
Great, any questions? Hearing none, I'll take a motion.
Madam Chair, I move to accept a recommendation of procurement and table the award of RFP 20049 to...
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, guys have it, motion carries. Thank you, Bob.
Miss Commissioners.
Breezy. All right, next we're gonna open the public hearing. We have, it looks like, four resolutions today, and we're going to take up resolution number 2515. This is a resolution appointing members and alternates to the Ada City County Emergency Management Executive Council. Any questions on that one? Okay, I'll take a motion on that.
Madam Chair, I move to approve resolution number 2515 as listed on the agenda.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, guys have it, motion carries. Next up, resolution 2516, Resolution Appointing Members and Alternates to the Valley Regional Transit Board. Any questions on that? If not, I'll take a motion.
These are just all our liaison things that we've...
That we've already talked about.
Reshuffled, exactly.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, you need to ask?
Testimony, any testimony?
Okay. Anyone wanna take our spots?
Yeah, volunteers, yeah, volunteers as an alternate.
Madam Chair, do you need to close that public hearing?
I can open and close at the end, yeah.
Okay, I will go ahead and move to approve resolution number 2516 as listed on the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, guys have it, motion carries. Next up, resolution 2517, Sole Source Procurement for LCF3 Firearms and Toolmarks Comparison Microscope. Any questions, or anyone to provide here, to provide testimony?
I'm assuming this is a ballistics-related thing for the Sheriff's Office.
Sheriff's Office, yeah. I don't think anyone is here from the Sheriff's Office, Bob.
Yes, Madam Chair, Commissioners, that is exactly right. It's to measure the lands and the grooves of...
Do I get access?
No, no. Hearing no other testimony, we'll go ahead with the motion.
Madam Chair, I move to approve resolution number 2517 as listed on the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, guys have it, motion carries. Next up, resolution 2518, For Procuring Water Pipe Materials and Installation on the Open Market. And I think we, anyone here to testify on this one? We've talked about this a few times.
This was the exorbitantly high bid that we decided not to take.
Yes.
Dawn is on WebEx, does she wanna say anything?
Dawn, did you care to comment on this?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just would like to add my support to operations and procurement. I think that this is a good call, and we appreciate the board's support in moving forward.
Great, thank you, Dawn. Appreciate that input. Any further testimony? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I move to approve resolution number 2518 as listed on the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, guys have it, motion carries. We're gonna close the public hearing and move into proclamations. We are so excited. We have a proclamation today designating June 30th, 2020, as Lynn Glick Day. It's super exciting, and I'm gonna have Commissioner Laciando read the proclamation.
Well, what an honor. And we have Jan here, who I know will have some things to say after this, but I will get it started.
Where is Lynn?
Lynn, this is a surprise. So we could be here later today, but we're doing this as a surprise to her. We're creating a video, so, and Heather's doing it right now, so she will, we can't do it in person.
Go Lynn!
So since we can't do it in person, we are taking the time to create a huge long video. We've got prior employees, retired employees who are spoken, so this is part of what we're doing.
Oh, awesome, okay. Super, make sure you get a close-up then of Commissioner Laciando.
Let's not do that, but, okay. So, whereas the Board of Ada County Commissioners is honored to recognize and congratulate Ada County Prosecuting Attorney's Office employee Lynn Glick for her 34 years of dedicated service as she retires, and whereas Lynn's career as the prosecuting attorneys, at the prosecuting attorney's office began as a calendar clerk, Lynn quickly rose to a critical leadership position in the office as the Finance and Administration Division Manager, and whereas through all the years and the many office changes, there has been one constant, Lynn's dedication to the community, her dedication to the office, and her professionalism. Lynn was constantly striving for excellence every day of her entire career. And whereas Lynn is more than just an employee of the Ada County Prosecuting Attorney's Office, she is a friend and mentor, and whereas Lynn should know that the Ada County Prosecuting Attorney's Office will not be the same without her. Lynn, you will be missed. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Ada County Commissioners does hereby proclaim June 30th, 2020 as Lynn Glick Day in Ada County, and urges all of Lynn's fellow employees, friends, and family to join us in congratulating her and wishing her the best of luck in retirement.
We're so proud to have Lynn for all of these years. We're lucky, as much as we are anything else, to have an exemplary employee like Lynn. I know, Jan, that you're ready to say a few words here, and if you wanna go ahead and come on up, that would be wonderful. Heather, do you wanna come up behind here so you can capture her?
Oh, that's a great idea, thank you.
This is your other duties as a...
That's right. And we'll put our masks on, so you can take yours off.
Oh, that'd be great, thank you. Thank you so much. I really, Madam Chair, Commissioners, thank you for doing this proclamation for Lynn. I can't think of anyone who deserves it more than Lynn Glick. It's a little emotional to think about losing Lynn because she has been a 34-year employee, and she was working in our office when I started, so she mentored me. And in particular, when I took over in 2014 and started, you know, really digging in, learning the budget, Lynn was invaluable to me, and I couldn't have done this without her. And although it's hard to say goodbye to her, I really want the community to know that she has done so much in service of our community to keep the public safe, working behind the scenes. She's not someone who, you know, comes out and is wanting attention. If anything, she doesn't wanna have attention, she's very humble. That's why we wanted to recognize her in this way, to surprise her. If I brought her here today for this, she would have been crawling under the table here because she would have been so embarrassed. So I know she'll appreciate that we're doing it this way. This is exactly what she would want. And on behalf of our office, thank you to the Commissioners for supporting this proclamation. And Lynn, thank you for your dedicated service. We're gonna miss you more than I can even say.
Okay, socially distant round of applause.
We'll miss you, Lynn, and we wish you the very best in the future. Thank you, okay, thank you, Jan, thank you, Heather. Wow, 34 years. You're almost there, Phil.
No, we're not.
All right, next we have operations, and we have a change order.
I started working here when you were two.
Oh, what's that? Yeah, proclamation, we need a motion for that.
Yeah.
That's right.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the proclamation as listed on the agenda and dedicate June 30th, 2020 as Lynn Glick Day.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, guys have it, motion carries. Next, we have operations, and we have change order number one. Do we have anyone here to talk about the change order? It's just a decrease, okay, go ahead, sure, come on up.
So, come up?
Why not, you're here.
Did you say come up?
Come on up.
Great.
We love to hear that we're saving money.
Okay. Generally, we set a contingency in a job, and for that job, we set a $20,000 contingency, and, you know, we just didn't use it all. So everything went well and straightforward, and so we just didn't have a lot of charges towards the contingency.
And what project was this?
Courtroom 200.
Okay.
Are we gonna have a ribbon cutting on this courtroom?
Eventually, yeah.
At some point when COVID allows, yeah, restrictions allow. Great, okay, thank you, any questions? Okay, let's go ahead then, now entertain a motion. Thank you.
Okay. Madam Chair, I move to approve change order number one as listed on the agenda and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, guys have it, motion carries. Next up, I'll need a motion for the licenses.
Where are we?
I've got it.
Yeah, I have. Yeah, go ahead.
Madam Chair, I move to ratify and approve the licenses previously signed as listed on the agenda, including 11 license renewals, and I move to approve the remaining licenses listed on the agenda, including one catering permit, and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, guys have it, motion carries. All right, Clerk's Office. Man, you've had a lot on your plate. Hi, good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Thank you, Commissioners, that is true. There, I, I cannot recall a busier time, you know, with 10 years of experience in the main part of the office, I can't recall a busier time just to overlap. You know, normally the election is in May, not in June, budgets, everything. You guys are seeing me a lot for a lot of reasons. I don't know that, I think we briefly introduced Saul back in March. Saul is our elections director. He came on board back in January, as you might appreciate. So one of the things that we have today is to certify the election results, to make them official. I just wanted to highlight just the work that Saul, the entire elections team, talk about being gifted just an absolutely challenging experience. I think Saul has some numbers he can share in terms of what we had to put into shifting to an all-male election. We're certainly not built for it. It's a really great thing that we got to see the turnout that we did for this election, but also if you work in the elections office, it's been daunting, just because the huge... I wanted to be able to share my screen, just some of the pictures and some of the things that we faced, but just on last Tuesday alone, we had over 16,000 ballots come in, which means...
One day.
That was just one day. So in one day, that, that one day puts us probably like, that's more than the, like, I think, top third of counties in the state received for the entire election. Right, that was our one day. And when you picture it, it led to an extremely late night. So Saul and I, I think, left the building a little after 4:30 on Wednesday, after a whole group of us had worked 21 hours straight just trying to handle the election. And a lot of that, all of those ballots, that means we had to open all the envelopes, had to check every single signature, all in a very short timeframe, right? And that's just that one day, let alone all the rest. It was exciting to see we had over 96,000 votes cast for this election, which is great, ended up being a 36.2% turnout. Both of those numbers are records in terms of recent memory for our primary election. For sure, ballots issued, it is a record, statewide, it was a record as well. So it was, it's great to see that kind of participation. It'll be very interesting to see how that continues or what the long-term implications are. We're already, unfortunately, as much as it seems like this election's over, Saul and I have already been having the conversations, about three-quarters of the people who requested ballots this election have requested them for August and November.
Yeah.
So we're gonna have, no matter how the election looks, we're gonna have a huge male presence in the November election, and so it's just, I really wanna highlight Saul's efforts, the team's efforts. I mean, there's some people, Rachel is a woman who oversees the absentees normally, like, we kinda divide up responsibilities, and poor Rachel, you know, she was prepared for like 3,000 absentees under normal circumstances, instead of 3,000, she got 96,000, or actually, she got 130,000. Yeah, that's an important correction. We did have, we had just over 74%. We did have, we had just over seventy-four percent of the absentees come back timely. We certainly have had more come back after the fact, but just with everything, the lawsuits, everything else, just a major, major undertaking. I think Saul, you said you had numbers in terms of just the man-hours.
Yeah, so we collectively have many more than five thousand hours into this, not counting an Election Staff, which is ten full-time staff, many of which, you know, we're putting in fifty to sixty-hour weeks for the last eight weeks. We've lived in a very alternative reality on some level in elections as things were shutting down. We were just continuing to scale. For a little bit of perspective, you know, that's over thirty full-time staff members for over a month in addition to our ten. So you can just see the scaling that had to take place.
You helped out our friends in Canyon County, too.
We did, yeah.
Yeah, we jumped in and helped them out. It was truly unprecedented. Our highest previous request was around forty-nine thousand in two thousand and eight. Return was around forty-eight thousand, as Phil mentioned. We hit ninety-six thousand return this time and a hundred and twenty-nine thousand plus issued, so truly monumental. I can't say enough to the Clerk's Office and the Court Support. We have a lot of those folks there with us all the way through, including some of those very long days at the end, so.
Yeah, it truly was all hands on deck. I mean, we had, in terms of court, so in-court clerks, you know, Judge Bales' clerk was out there a number of days, others. In-court clerks and the court clerks especially, some of them, it's funny for them to be back here because they spent two months away at elections as opposed to being home. They were just hunkered down in the warehouse, spreading everybody out.
Just going to ask where you were located in the warehouse?
Yeah, we were all over the building. So we had, in order to attempt to maintain social distancing while handling all this work, I mean, thankfully, we have a warehouse, right? So we have lots of square feet out there and so we just spread people across all of it trying to maintain safety measures and thankfully, we're able to keep everybody healthy, you know, just like everything else in the county in the midst of it. We used indigent folks and it was truly pulling out every stop.
How do you prepare for November now, really not knowing and understanding, you know, exactly what that's been?
If I can follow on that, I guess since I've had a number of those questions come at me, which I'm not, you know, as prepared to answer, so to the degree you're able to, I know you're close to the conversations about what that decision process will look like. Is that something you're prepared to somewhat answer on the record?
Yeah, sure. I've been at tech. That's been probably the number one question I've gotten since Election Day is what does November look like? I mean, interesting, for planning questions, one of the things, we're in a difficult spot in the sense that West Ada is considering an election for August. If you're asking us, we desperately don't want that because our team just needs a break. Like, we can only, because one of the things that, as much as we emphasize what happened in May, May happens right on the heels of March. We had a March election for the Presidential preference primary and never got, the staff never got a break, right? And elections is very much amp, 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 way up and then usually there's some rest. But we've just kind of been one marathon to the next. So that's one of the challenges. And interestingly enough, too, August is not an election that will probably get the same level of attention from the Governor's Office, others do. So there's a question of how August would be conducted. Because right now, the orders that exist only apply to the May election. So presumably, all the normal polling places, everything would apply to any future election. I do not suspect that we will have an all-male election for November. But just based on the feedback that we received during it, everything else, the pressures that you guys are all familiar with.
Yeah, Lawrence Denny's been on the record saying he wants to really get it.
Yeah, I, I think it will be some sort of hybrid. We could see, depending on the circumstances in terms of COVID and everything else, consolidating polling places. We were set to roll out our electronic poll books in May. Obviously, we didn't because we didn't have any polling places. So we're looking at what can we do to leverage those for any response as we move forward. But we also know that, I mean, we'll probably issue a hundred thousand absentee ballots on the first go, which is probably close to fifty percent of what the likely turnout will be for the election. Just based, I mean, two hundred and three thousand was our previous, in two thousand and sixteen was how many people voted. So that's received. But the one challenge is, as much as we say this was tough and this was a lot of work, presidential elections are always way more work. Like, just, we have a constitutional amendment on the ballot, so odds are it's a two-page ballot. There's a bunch of factors that are going to weigh on how November is going to work. Thankfully, we don't have to have anybody pick, right, which party or anything else like that. It is simpler in that sense.
Yeah, I think that, you know, we've had this conversation, the part I continue to worry about and, you know, I guess we just stand ready to help you in whatever way we can, is just thinking about your, your poll workers. So they tend to be retired, they tend to be older. It's, you know, they don't necessarily need the job and so, you know, as we get closer, if we start to see another spike, even if they had committed prior, will they back away? And what kind of contingency we may need. And I think that's the part that maybe gets lost in the public discussion that we are so reliant on those employees to conduct in-person elections and that's a major, major factor.
Yeah, we would anticipate, I think those are all spot on, we would anticipate using over twelve hundred people in the polls. Even if there isn't a rise in cases, we still may have coworkers who just don't want to take the risk.
Right.
I mean, at any given polling location, especially in a presidential election, you're having two, probably two thousand people come through a single facility, all touching the same materials and as much as we might try to clean things, like, it's just, it's a rare instance where you gather that many strangers, right, together. And so I think we'll have to work through what that will be. In addition to people, poll workers, another area that will be a challenge is polling places. Part of what motivated this was facilities just saying, sorry, no thanks. Like, and people, we often get a lot of pushback and people say, well, why don't you just vote here? And it's like, well, property rights are strong in Idaho and we can't just force ourselves into somebody's facility, right? We're always at the whim. I mean, certainly in the past, Saul took early, early on, so this was in the end of February, to put it in time, moving us out of all assisted living centers and senior centers because we do use those as polling places.
I didn't even think about that, yeah.
I mean, so we're using common spaces.
Back to the fairgrounds, back to our show.
Yeah, I was going to wonder.
I see what you charged.
I wondered if it wasn't time to go, to go back to...
Well, we have to earn it, Phil. We don't get handed to us.
I wondered if it wasn't time to go back to, if you're a PC, then you host a polling place in your garage. I mean, because that used to be, that used to be the days that I grew up in.
Those, and I, it's safe to say that used to be the days.
It was, yeah.
In this election, this is one of those things, we had the Department of Justice from DC come verify that we were meeting ADA accessibility standards. That's one of the burdens that we have. We worked closely with them. I know they're scrutiny on other counties. So, I mean, all the typical challenges didn't go away because we're voting by mail.
Every driveway is ADA compliant. I mean, that's, again, back to the garages.
No, I guess just as I, I think, you know, maybe less so in Idaho than in other places. You know, absentee has become very politicized and partisan, but sort of under that question are all these very real logistical questions this coming November. And I hope that the powers that be can sort of, to the degree possible, push aside the partisan or whatever questions and just look at the logistics and the safety of, of, you know, whether we can make a go of it.
To that...
Initiatives, yeah.
Yeah, to that point, a question for you collectively that we wanted to ask. Right, right now, we are in a position, we need to be ordering envelopes for the future. There's a, there's a fear, there's going to be a national envelope shortage due to all-male, like...
Toilet paper?
Yes, election envelopes. The state of California has already declared they will do an all-male election for Governor. So just, there's a surge of people who, like, LA usually doesn't actually do very much mail, but just LA alone will suck up the world's energy. And so a question for us is, we added prepaid postage on the returns. That was unique. We typically don't do that. It was paid out of your general postage account for that. We paid the postage on the outgoing, but you guys paid the postage on the incoming. Is that something you would like to continue for August or November?
I'd say so. I think we need to ensure, you know, we don't want, what I so appreciate about that, even though for many of us, is the stamp, right? No big deal. But you don't want any sort of impression that there's any barrier to, to voting and having to pay to put it on. I would say yes, but we need to kind of look at where it comes from.
I would have no objection to that. I mean, the time, the time and energy it's going to take somebody to drive to their polling place, you know, to and from their polling place, be there, go through that. If, if they choose and opt in that, I think it's a, it's a good trade-off. And somewhat to that end, I'm curious, you don't, and you may not have the answer now, but down the road, I'd like to know, from a cost standpoint, I know you had extra workers and things like that to do all this, but there's obviously expense in, you know, generating polling places everywhere. I'd, I'd be curious if you have any idea now or in the future, if you can, you know, when life is normal again, kind of give us some idea as to the cost shift in doing an all-mail-in election.
We, we generally know now that for the most part, they offset each other. The cost of, specific poll workers is one of our largest expenses. We didn't have all those poll workers, so that went into the mail. So for the most part, we're fortunate, too. There's additional CARES Act funding specific for our election response. Actually, we'll, we're going to be looking at how we leverage some of the CARES funds more for our response for November. I mean, a lot of May was just us reacting, right? Whereas November, in terms of like receiving ballots and some other, we may be looking at some equipment purchases to handle this volume, just because this, it's going to get bigger and it was already such a big undertaking.
So if you pulled postage out of that, would the mail-in have been slightly less than operating all the polling places or is it still very close?
I think we'll, how about, we have to account for all this, so we'll follow up with real numbers for you. Because I think even for us, I mean, we can make rough estimations, but we'll follow up.
I'm just curious, you know, where the postage fits in. Is it cheaper to go one way or the other?
Yeah, it does. It's, it's surprisingly more expensive, anything that we do in elections than most people think in terms of because of the heightened standard for security, the quality of print, the complex. I mean, that's one of the challenges we faced is, heck, you guys are all involved in politics. So people think of mailers and like the postcard chasers or something or working with autos or, like, our mail pieces are like eight-piece mailings that average postal player can't handle. Like, these are complicated mailing. And then the accuracy that the right ballot went into each individual one. So there's a lot more cost and complexity than just a typical mailing.
Well, the other, to your point about the envelopes, though, I, I mean, they don't go bad. You know, if you felt that you needed to kind of pre-purchase some things, knowing that we may be in a scenario where each state is competing for items again.
That's where I need, just wanted to ask you about the prepaid postage because we actually print that on the envelopes.
Yeah, what was the cost?
We spent sixty thousand dollars.
Yeah, just, just underneath sixty thousand. I would anticipate that we will have a larger absentee turnout in November, so we will see that number uptick. But when you think about it, it's about seventy-five cents a ballot for return costs.
So that's just for the return?
Yeah. And, yeah, depending on August, you know, the only thing I'll say is, you know, it's been my experience through life that as voters get used to something taking things away, it can be difficult.
Right.
And so that's just something that I would put out there as a consideration for.
Call it a COVID stamp. There you go.
But we are, we are in the process and working on those material requisitions right now and we're looking at about a hundred and seventy-five thousand.
And this should be all reversible, think or not?
This will be, yes. As we get towards November, I anticipate most of this will be. I mean, that, but that's one, but I also think what Saul's pointing out is the more we make it a habit, the more the expectation starts to get built in. And so we just want to balance that.
You'll have to do the PR the following year and say, you have to put a stamp on it this time.
And it'll be interesting to see how people's behavior change. We were, our, what's interesting, prior to this election, we were seeing a decline in participation via mail-in voting, where, with a much greater rise for in-person or early voting. And that's, that is where we are kind of designed to go towards. And so this will just be an interesting inflection point.
Well, I think the timing being in November, we're looking if there is a spike. It's probably going to be September, October. People are back in school and have been traveling and whatnot. And if you look at what's going on around the world, like Poland, for example, seeing the huge uptick just from that one ordination. So I would be all for having the stamps and sending them out and keeping people at home as much as possible and not even going out to buy the stamp is helpful.
Yeah. So just to shift the formal piece of today, we do need to, you should have a motion for the results. Before you do that, though, I want to speak to a couple of things related to the results. This, this election, despite all its successes, was not without its flaws. We did, as you know, we had some mailings that we had to re-mail. We worked through all that. That added, we learned definitely don't make mistakes because it added a ton of work on us. But also, a couple of things in terms of the results that I want to note because this is not as clean as I would normally hope. One, we just identified yesterday, this is part of our post kind of cleanup and looking into things. There is one instance of a precinct committee man in precinct seventeen-ten where there was some confusion at the filing window. The person had been in precinct, in seventeen-ten when they filed, but they re-registered in precinct seventeen-eleven and therefore, they're not eligible to be seated. So they're not part of your results. We've contacted the person, let them know, so we've cleaned that up, but just want to acknowledge that. And then the other part is, there is one anomaly that we are pretty sure we, well, we have a decent idea. There's an anomaly in the numbers between when we compare the number of absentees that we received, so the names that we received versus the number of ballots that we counted in precinct twenty...
Twenty-fourteen.
Twenty-fourteen. There's a hundred and seven ballots more counted than names listed. But there's also, by coincidence, a batch that was scanned that also matched at a hundred and seven ballots. It's our impression that we just didn't receive that, like, we didn't scan those in like we should have. The problem for us, we would normally have an answer for you today prior to accepting these results, but a law was passed this legislative session with an emergency clause that says we can't touch the ballots until the contest period is over. So we know it.
We can't look at them.
We can't. Yeah, we know exactly what we need to do. We know right where we need to go to do it, but we are prohibited from touching them. And so it's just going to be...
Wait, we have to certify and then you can do it?
I'm, I'm publicly acknowledging this, like, if anybody wants it has, it will not, no matter what, it would not change any outcomes or anything, right? So this is fortunate in this instance. We think we have, we have a pretty good theory on what it is and we would normally try to clean this up, but we can't. We will go into it after the contest period ends, which is twenty days after the state certifies these results. So we, we're aware of it. I know it feels strange to ask you to do it, but really, the way the law is written out, there's no other way for us other than to certify these. If someone takes issue with it, they can and we'll work through that.
So that's an opportunity for legislative discussion potentially.
Oddly, yeah, it's, it's, there's, it's a double-edged because it was just passed through the legislature this year because of some contentious elections and recounts where they didn't want anybody touching the ballots. And we would have been opening back boxes of ballots. So there's a, in this situation, it makes perfect sense. We should go in and access them. In other situations, it makes sense, we shouldn't, and so.
Well, I'm just wondering if we make the motion if we shouldn't have a caveat identifying the ballots in question.
Yeah, we, we believe, it's our inclination, that the results are correct. That what we'll find when we do it is we'll confirm that they are correct.
There'd be a follow-up certification of results or something, right? I mean...
Only if there's a contest or a recount or something where that would be, then we would have new results that would be certified. But otherwise, these will stand as the official results.
Well, with that, I guess we're ready to make the motion.
I know you always hope for no close races.
This was actually a great election, other than we have a coin toss tomorrow. But that was fine. I mean, coin toss is always fun.
All right.
Madam? Precinct Committee Man race. And this, one person is their second coin toss.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Commissioner.
Pursuant to Idaho Code thirty-four dash one-two-zero-five and thirty-four dash fourteen-ten, which requires the Board of County Commissioners to, to canvass election results, I move to certify the May nineteenth, two thousand and twenty primary election, West Ada School District levy, Cuna Fire District special tax levy results as presented by the clerk and as suggested with the caveat that we may have a update on one ballot issue.
I will second that.
If a motion is second, all those in favor state aye.
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 Aye. Guys, have a motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much. I know you guys are just still grinding, so, yeah. I don't know what you're feeding them.
We'll be here with you this afternoon, ready to go.
Chocolate, giving them chocolates.
Appreciate it.
They're saving races. You don't have to hang out with us for BOA. That's Bob, so, yeah.
I saw you on there.
Yeah.
Committee man.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, when I was canvassing, when I was going through the results, yeah.
It's an interesting story.
Okay, yeah. All right, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion for the Claims Journal.
Madam Chair, I move to authorize payment of claims on the Claims Journal dated June fifth, two thousand and twenty.
Aye, a second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye. Guys, have a motion carries. Always trying to throw us there.
I was on the wrong, I was on... I was on the wrong, I was on the wrong.
All right, I'll go ahead, uh, next with the motion for personal action forms.
Go ahead.
Okay, Madam Chair, I move to approve the personal action forms as listed on the agenda, including two introductory period pay completion, pay increases and one leave with pay and that the summary sheet remain on file in the Commissioner's office.
Second.
If a motion is second, all those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, guys have it, motion carries, next up, the Sessions Office. Bob, come on up, we get to see a lot of you these days.
Yes, it was nice seeing you.
Madam Chairman, Commissioners, I just can make a very brief report about the appeals received so far. Uh, a week ago, yester-, well, as, as of yesterday, uh, we had had seventy-two appeals filed here and we had ninety-four last year.
Okay.
And I just mentioned that, but we have some, some, slightly fewer appeals this year than we had last year. That's what the indications are. The two areas where we're getting a lot of phone calls are the bench and the north end, which typically, uh, the, the bench the last two years has been, uh, it receives higher evaluations and then, uh, the north end typically is, is always very problematic, it has been for over twenty years.
Not surprising.
No, not at all, but, uh, so I just wanted to just brief you on that.
Okay.
So I have two more weeks before a BOA starts.
The twenty-second is the deadline, correct?
Yes.
And these are simply appeal filings, they don't mean all those people are coming before us.
Uh, Madam Chairman, that's correct, probably, oh, maybe fifteen percent will actually result in hearings. Something is different this year though, is we have telephone hearings. And so that's the wild card and I'm anxious to see how that plays out.
His staff does a remarkable job.
No, and that's, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, getting things resolved, so. They end up in front of us, it's not that you haven't given it everything that you can to get it resolved, we know that.
No, we really do, we, we try very hard and probably are able to resolve about ninety percent of them before they ever come to a hearing, eighty-five, ninety percent.
Bob and I don't think Elizabeth is still here, but is there any sort of last push on, um, property tax reduction to tell people they can still do it, is that something we can help with?
So, is that property tax reduction, BTR?
Is there, yeah, any sort of last push to tell them?
Uh, we have not planned on, we could certainly throw something together.
I was gonna say, maybe just one more social media push or something, cause.
Okay.
Yeah.
Together with Elizabeth, yeah.
Okay, cause the deadline's Friday?
Is, uh, Monday, I believe.
Yeah, it'd be good to get something up this week.
One last, you know, especially as people have their assessments now.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's the fun part about it this year is they get the assessment and they can still file for the property tax reduction program.
Yeah, and the information was on there, so, great job this year, yeah.
We'll get in touch with all those and make that happen.
Perfect.
Yeah, thank you. All right, next up, Treasurer's Office, it looks like Tim is here, good morning, Tim, how are you?
Madam Chair.
I apologize, I left my report upstairs.
Yeah, uh, well, I'll just briefly review it and we were in compliance with our policy. Uh, the only significant thing we did, uh, in May was we had a, a new agency bond purchase for three million dollars. Uh, that one was a, a callable type bond and so there is a possibility that could get called in the future depending on what rates do. Uh, it had a point-seven-five, um, coupon and right now the two and three years, which is what we typically look at, is between point-two-five and point-three-five, so they're very, the, the yields that you're getting on bonds these days are very low. Uh, so that one, the reason we chose to go with that, um, it, it matures in twenty-twenty-five, does have a, a call next, uh, May. Uh, so we could get that call, but the yield on it was significant enough where it seemed like a good purchase for us. Um, uh, one thing I was, maybe wanted to highlight, I believe you get this, I, I brought the full report here instead of the condensed Commissioner's report and I think you get this blue chart. Uh, I'm sure you've seen that and probably know very well what it indicates. I was reviewing it and, and it's, uh, we're eight months now into our fiscal year. Uh, we've received a little over two-point-eight million in investment income on our portfolio. And if that trend continues, you know, we might be somewhere in investment income at the end of the fiscal year, right around three-point-seven million.
Does that represent around two percent?
Um, it's a little less than that.
A little less.
Yeah, uh, and what I'd have to do is, is really look back at all the months and then come up with a, um, an average monthly amount. Yeah, this, this month here, uh, our portfolio was about two-hundred million. Uh, the book value, one, one-hundred-ninety-nine million, the market value, a little over two-hundred, two-hundred-one million. And the reason the market value is up is because, as you're probably aware, anytime, um, bond prices go up, yields go down and vice versa. So ours, uh, with bond prices going down in the current market, our market value has gone up. And so it's unrealized income, we don't trade bonds, so we don't ever sell them. And so we look at the yield to maturity and, uh, that's always indicated on the front page and right now it's at one-point-five-seven. So that, although it sounds low historically, uh, these days, that's, uh, anybody who could get that may be very happy in the, you know, government investing area. So I think that's all I have.
So in addition of the yield, if you could do the, run the ROI, the annual, maybe take a look at that.
For the fiscal year?
For the fiscal year, yeah, it would be interesting to see, start tracking that.
Sure.
Good, I remember the good old days, get an eight, ten percent, twelve percent, now it's like zero, zero point, yeah.
Yeah, times have changed.
They have, they have, yeah. So hopefully we'll get into a position at some point if the legislation, legislators are willing to allow us to invest in corporate bonds as well as government bonds and that may bump the yield or the, the ROI up one percent. Which would be significant for a portfolio.
With, with this, uh, amount of money, that does make a big difference over time.
Huge difference, yeah. So we'll put field to work on that this year, over there.
That's got them.
Thank you, Tim, anything else from the Treasurer's Office? Okay, thank you, appreciate it. Great, next up landfill, rates billing for county offices, we've heard here, Kurt, come on in, come on up. What do you have for us today, landfill rates billing for county offices?
Madam Chair, so, uh, and part of our, uh, new, uh, rate resolution that we did, we were talking about discussing any of the free or reduced rates. So we came up with, um, applications, um, so we were sending applications out to everyone. Uh, and so one of the questions that came up with, um, with the, uh, other departments within the county and kinda getting a decision on if, you know, they need to do the applications and, uh, to be approved or, um, or, uh, are they gonna get charged, um, uh, the regular landfill fees.
I'll speak to this, so.
I'm just, I'm kind of behind the curve on this one.
Yeah, so just to sort of circle back, as we did the cost of service study, um, and, and really maybe sort of more of a larger philosophical issue. Um, I think it's really important for us to utilize, I'll take this off. Cost-centered accounting so that, uh, we actually know where our two costs are occurring. And it certainly with landfill being an enterprise fund, um, and I understand the, I understand why it was done in the past to give free rates to our departments, but I don't think it's a very accurate reflection of what the true cost is to landfill, so I, I would be much more comfortable, um, with our departments and offices, um, who need to utilize the landfill actually paying for that cost and then we won't budget it and, and away we go. I think it's a, sort of an unfair subsidy from other ratepayers.
Well, like you said, you can't do true cost accounting with, yeah, without doing it that way. So who's most impacted by this in terms of our, our departments or?
So in fiscal year twenty-nineteen, um, not counting ACHD, um, the Operations Department, uh, Expo Idaho, I'm sorry, Expo Idaho.
Lot of trash out there.
And, and a lot of that is the fair. Um, and then, you know, following them is the, uh, operations and then parks and waterways.
Okay. So how does that impact your budget, Bob? If you were to pay for, do we have any amounts or do you know the general amount? Do you know the general, come on up, do you know the general amount that you spend?
We have it, it looks like it's about twenty, or seven thousand.
Oh, is this?
Uh, aver-, that's average over the last three years, so last year, the, the, it was eight-thousand, three-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars and seventy cents.
Okay. ACHD is the one we're gonna have to have some conversations with them. Do you have any, um, objections or any comments on, um, did you hear what we're saying that we're going to just have the county departments pay what it is? So we can just make sure that we're doing proper, um, open, transparent cost accounting, we can figure out what the true cost is so then we can plan for future landfill needs?
Yeah.
I think we can absorb that.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
No worries, yeah.
Or, or pass it on to those that have the agreements to use the Expo, you know, use the area, cause you're really not throwing away probably, most of it's not your trash.
No.
It's other people's trash.
Yeah.
And so.
A lot of that at Fairtime is, is, uh, animal waste that we take up to the bedding and so forth, so. The other part of that, we just, we may need to look at our rates that we charge and just build that into there.
Right, yeah.
What I would like to probably do.
You just may need to make some adjustments on that.
I don't. I copy, keep it.
And then Bruce, it's about sixteen K for you, so similarly as we look, I don't know that this was included in.
That was a, that was a three-year average.
Three-year average, so I don't know if that's included or not, it looks, that looks a lot more disparate over time. Twenty-eighteen, we had, you know, fourteen-hundred tons and then twenty-nineteen, seventy-eight tons, so it would just depend.
If that is for records destruction?
That is not.
We haul, we haul stuff up here.
Okay.
That, that's not, um, that was, uh, the elections stuff is not on this report because we've never tracked that. Um, and then also.
I think you said records.
Yeah.
Records destruction.
Records.
We haul lots of destruction.
Documents and.
No, that's not, that's not generally what that would be. I think part of it is, um, I think, uh, it was absorbed, like a lot of your, uh, the construction, uh, when does your, when was your office rebuilt?
Seventeen.
Seventeen, eighteen? Yeah, so a lot of that is through the Operations Department comes up, so that big year was probably a lot of that.
Okay. Well, I would feel comfortable, more comfortable if, have you had a conversation with each of the department hats and elected officials? Or at least the department hats on this, to just get input and see if there's any caveats or any.
No, we have not.
Concerns? I would just assume they have a conversation first before we do anything on this.
Well, I think the only question is that we have budget happening, so they.
Timing wise, my right now would be.
It's a timing issue, I thought we already had this a few months ago, we had this conversation, so, um, maybe it didn't trickle out to departments.
It's the first, Bruce has heard of it, first Bob's heard of it, so I just think we need to at least give you the opportunity the next day, if you can get a day or two, get in touch with everyone and bring it back to us, just to make sure on Thursday, possibly? Yeah. Thursday, yeah, I just wanna make sure everybody's been able to have a conversation with Kurt, look at the numbers, um, figure out how they're going to absorb it.
Right.
And if they have any concerns, bring it back to the board.
And then separately, I know a letter was sent, I, I know we have some other maybe legal questions we need to talk through. A letter was sent to ACHD, I believe, about this a few months ago. Am I missing that or no?
Uh, we sent out a letter to everyone about, uh, having to fill out an application and reapply for any kind of free or.
I'm, I'm sure ACHD is waiting to have a conversation with us.
I'm sure they are, but.
Yeah, it looks like they will, I.
But similarly, they're in, they're in budget mode, so we don't wanna.
Sandy, can you have, do you reach out and set up, um, a conversation, at least a phone conference with Bruce?
Yes.
Long, please, with the, the board and we can at least have that conversation on the phone.
Sure, there may be unintended consequences with that.
Yeah, this, yeah, this is, I'm sure, entwined, entwined.
All right, well, I, I don't know that that's appropriate anyway, so.
Yeah.
We should be paying impact fees just like everybody else.
But we need to have an open conversation with the board with all the information, so if we could have, Bruce, if you can get us that information, that would be great, is there anything else that we have with ACHD? That we know of in terms of trade or kind or anything like that?
I think we're gonna have, we need to have that discussion in legal and then we'll, yeah.
So you're the trash lady, you wanna take the lead on that, get it?
Um, I think it's already being teed up, so.
Yeah, that's significant amount, so I know we'll need to have some conversations. Okay, anything else for landfill rates? We, there's nothing to vote to take a motion on here? Just approval, no, that's it, okay, good, thank you.
All right.
All right, approval minutes, I'll need a motion.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the minutes as identified on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second. If a motion is second, all those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, guys have it, motion carries. Next up Expo, Bob, come on up, Kitzenera, Gotcho, and the Republicans. That's a strange combination, right Phil?
It's called the popery of events there.
Yeah, you, you, you serve all.
Pardon me?
You serve everyone, so.
Equal opportunity, all right, any questions for Bob?
Those are not overlapping events, right, the Republicans are not having a.
It's all one big event.
The Republicans are having a Gotchinsenera?
Yeah.
Gotchins, that's good, yeah. Any questions I can answer, anybody?
Just thank you so much for everything you're doing out there, being so accommodating.
These teams are great, you know.
And it sounds like now.
Ways to make business work.
And it sounds like now might be a new polling location.
We'll work with you, Phil, we'll work with you.
Madam Chair, so my only comment was just, um, uh, we did receive some feedback from, uh, from Central District Health about your plans, so just ensuring that you're incorporating those recommendations, uh, both into your work and then the contracts that you set up with vendors.
Yeah, yeah, we're doing that right now and I, and it was good feedback from them, I think we're ninety percent on track. I would, that was good for them to review that, I thank you for letting me do that.
Okay, great.
And then we will have another discussion on Thursday, the Fairboard meeting's on Thursday at five-thirty.
We had an event open up this last weekend with the time trials outside.
We did, I drove by there and they were all so dizzy, had their mask on even though the rain helped make that happen.
Yeah, I did as well and everything looked, yeah, very proper.
So we're getting there and I, and we're gonna pick up some sanitizer and stuff today from Operations, thank you, Operations, and we'll go from there.
Okay.
Super, okay, I'll entertain a motion then.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the three interim event agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second.
If a motion is second, all those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, guys have it, motion carries, next up, Parks and Waterways.
Madam Chairman, Commissioners?
Thank you, Scott here, anyone for Parks and Waterways? Nope, let's go ahead then with the motion.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the three Barbara Park Education and Events Center agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second.
If a motion is second, all those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, guys have it, motion carries, next up, agreements.
Okay, Madam Chair, I move to approve the five agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the board.
Second.
If a motion is second, all those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, guys have it, motion carries, next up, Indigent Services, and I will lead a motion.
Madam Chair, I move to accept the recommendations of Indigent Services staff as listed on the summary of case dated June ninth, twenty-twenty, and authorize the chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the board.
Second.
If we have motion is second, all those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, guys have it, motion carries, next up, agreement, uh, Bob, once again, it's like we have a review of bids and a board recommendation.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, I'm gonna take my mask off.
Go ahead.
We've received two responses for bid two-zero-zero-five-one, the Ada County Courthouse Complex Parking Gate Upgrade twenty-twenty. And, um, of the two responses submitted, the one submitted by Copperhead Electric was non-responsive for not having a public works license. And so by Idaho Code, they're not able to, we're not able to accept their bid because they don't have a license. Uh, I mention that because Copperhead Electric also submitted a protest on the specifications that we had out for the project. They wanted confirmation that the other bidder, Tri-State Electric, uh, included fee computers in their bid. And Operations did follow up with Tri-State Electric and Tri-State Electric did include the, uh, three, um, um, point-of-sale fee computers in their bid, so they did comply with the specifications of what they made. Uh, we, uh, I followed up with, uh, Copperhead Electric to let them know that, uh, Tri-State did indeed include that into their bid. And with that, uh, Copperhead Electric was, uh, okay with those findings and they emailed me this morning and have withdrawn their protest.
Okay.
So, uh, based on this information, uh, would the board want to proceed, uh, going forward with the award recommendation? Or would you care to table it?
But those are only two respondents. But those are only two respondents?
Well, only one now.
Yeah, just one respondent.
Right.
Yeah. Bruce, do you have any comments, any?
No, I think we're fine with the.
Tri-State.
Okay, okay.
And what was, what was their?
What was their amount?
Amount?
The amount bid by Tri-State was one-hundred-and-fifty-nine thousand, four-hundred-and-eighteen dollars. If the, the boards wanting to go forward with the award recommendation, I do have an award letter.
I'd be fine with that. I'm fine with that.
Yeah.
If they have withdrawn their protest, then, yeah, it looks like we've got one, one good bidder, so.
All righty.
Okay.
Well, I'll proceed forward with reading the letter into the record then.
Please.
The letter is dated June ninth, two thousand and twenty, to the Board of Ada County Commissioners from Ada County Procurement regarding bid two-zero-zero-five-one. Dear members of the board, Ada County Procurement received two responses for bid two-zero-zero-five-one. The following are the names of the bidders and the bid amounts submitted. Number one, Copperhead Electric, non-responsive, no public works license. Number two was Tri-State Electric Incorporated in the amount of one-hundred-and-fifty-nine thousand, four-hundred-and-eighteen dollars. After reviewing the bid submitted, it's the recommendation of the evaluation group to award the contract for bid two-zero-zero-five-one to Tri-State, Tri-State Electric Incorporated as the lowest responsive bidder for the total bid amount of one-hundred-and-fifty-nine thousand, four-hundred-and-eighteen dollars. Sincerely, Bob Perkins.
Peep, 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 peep.
You did, yeah, you got that right.
All right, you ready for a motion?
Sure. Madam Chair, I move to award, take the recommendation of Procurement and award bid two-zero-zero-five-one to Tri-State Electric, Inc. in the amount of one-thousand-five-hundred and one.
Fifty-nine.
One-hundred-and-fifty-nine thousand, four-hundred-and-eighteen dollars.
I will second that.
If motion is second, all those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, guys have it, motion carries.
First question.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing done, we'll go under recess. Thanks, everyone. Have a great day. Good to see you.